I can, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, okay. All right, we will call to order this commission meeting on June 11th at 2:04 PM. We'd like to start these meetings with a prayer reading or thought followed by the pledge. Josh Chapel will give us the prayer and Eric Knutson will lead us in the pledge.
Our dear county and holy father, how grateful we are to meet today at this commission meeting. And we're grateful for the favorable circumstances which bring us together and we're grateful for the items and the things that will be discussed. We pray that those that will present or have the opportunity to speak will be able to speak in a way that would be pleasing unto thee. We're grateful to live in a community where we feel safe and we're grateful for the men and women in law enforcement that are willing to sacrifice and to answer those difficult calls. We pray that that will bless them. We also ask a blessing to be upon this commission that they too will be able to be directed by thy spirit and be able to do the things which they need to, to continue to make our county run as smoothly as it can. We say these things, we do it humbly in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you, Josh.
The audience would rise. Please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Eric. All right. First item is a work session to discuss TRT revenues, expenses, and proposed uses. Ezra, do you want to tee that up?
Uh, yes, if we can bring up my slides here. Okay, so many people are aware that the state legislature recently approved some changes to the TRT tax. This is our transient room tax, which includes items related to hotels, but HB 456 in the 2025 session is the bill that was changed and that will be effective starting July 1st. If you want to go to the next slide. Just a brief overview on HB 456. It changes the transit room tax, which it's imposed on hotels, motels, the similar type establishments. The legislature worked very closely with UAC on this bill to change some of the details. I know originally some of this was related to some TRT changes that the state was pushing, but UAC, huge props to them for coming in and actually doing some things that I think ended up benefiting the counties incredibly well, so we're glad to see that. But for us, the main things that have changed is that we have more flexibility on the uses. So historically, and I'll actually get into the history in the next couple of slides here, but this tax was a lot more restrictive on what we could spend it on, even though the whole purpose of the tax is for tourism and, you know, tourism-related impacts that the county deals with. And so I'm excited to share some of those changes with you. But the reason we're bringing up today is prior to July 1st, if the county chooses, they can adopt an additional 0.25% of sales tax on these hotels and other establishment purposes. So this is really just, I mean, when you think of all the different tax rates that our residents pay, this is one where you're truly capturing those tourists that are coming into town that are staying in hotels. I mean, a small portion of people like to do the staycation thing, but for the most part, you're really getting these people that are coming in from outside of the county, outside of the state, to contribute to our tax base for the impacts that they have. So go ahead and pop over to the next slide. So just again to recap, under the old bill, there was a 4.25% sales tax charged in addition on those hotels, motels, other units. They had a kind of a confusing formula where no more than one-third of the first 3% could be spent on things other than tourism promotion efforts. So kind of it's been split up to say like you've got your brick and mortar pieces and you've got your tourism promotion pieces. And so some of those old eligible items for second-class counties, we could use those just for the brick and mortar portion, convention rooms, exhibit halls, visitor information centers, museums, those types of actual practical facilities. If you go to the next slide, we'll see the new eligibility. So, so starting this year, counties of our size, starting on July 1st, we can implement the additional 0.25%, so that would move the total percentage up to 4.5%, which that would translate for us about $400,000 of additional revenue annually. And then they've also just simplified it to say the first 2% is eligible for establishing and promoting tourism and film productions, conventions, those kind of marketing-type activities, and then all else can be spent on the new eligible items. And so if you look to the right, we've got the new eligible items. So we do include all those things that were previously there, the convention centers, those actual physical brick and mortar structures. But now for counties of our size that generate more than $1 million annually in this fund, trails are now eligible, and then the mitigation impacts on the direct effects of tourism. So this was previously only offered to smaller counties, but things like sanitation services for county parks, emergency medical services, search and rescue, law enforcement in our unincorporated county and some of those high tourist areas. We know we have tons of trails in Utah County, tons of wonderful mountain hikes, but it does bring a lot of demand from tourists and from protecting those tourists as well. So go ahead and move to the next slide. So now I want to get into some additional considerations for our county. So I've spoken with some of our directors that have potential eligible uses. So hereon, you have whatever decisions you guys want to make on what projects you want to prioritize. I'm just giving a brief overview of some of the ones we've already identified, but there's still definitely many more opportunities that are available. So in the county, we have actually very limited road maintenance needs for our recreational areas because a lot of those roads that service those areas that we're protecting, that we're doing search and rescue operations on, are maintained by the state. There are a few opportunities. One includes 800 North to 17600 West. That's a road that goes out of Eagle Mountain, kind of to a, there's a pretty popular shooting facility over there in that area. We've recently done some road upgrades there to establish a base, to widen it, to lay down gravel, but if we wanted to improve that to a paved road, we're looking at roughly $4 million of costs out there. We do also have Boat Harbor Drive, which is in the Provo area, heading out to the Utah Lake State Park. That's an opportunity we could look at potentially improving that road. I know it's, the Lake Authority has expressed some interest in seeing that road upgraded as well, especially with some of the planned upgrades that are happening at the state park. They're having a master plan effort to establish some more amenities there and there might be some really cool partnership opportunities with the state. And then we've got a number of roads up in kind of the Tibble Fork area that we could look at as well. We have a lot of trail projects, though. Couple that have been identified, the Jordan River Trail, a lot of pavement rehab projects. Those all range between, you know, half a million to a couple million dollars. The Provo Canyon Trail pavement rehab, that's the most expensive one that we've already identified at 3.5 million. But then we also have a need for new trail parks as well, new trail projects as well, sorry. The Utah Lakeshore Trail, Payson Canyon Trail, and the High Line Canal Trail. Definitely seen some interest from the public in those areas and would love to be able to consider some of those as well. If you want to move to the next slide, we have our, just a brief overview of our search and rescue operations. So Utah County has a very successful search and rescue program. We monitor all the different canyons and trails and, you know, with visitors, we see most of our activity from search and rescue from those visitors. The locals have a really good sense of what's safe and how to navigate our trails, but a lot of the time, these visitors, they don't have that same experience and so they find themselves in dangerous situations that we have to then go rescue them. But for our search and rescue team, currently all of our volunteers, they pay entirely out of pocket for all their equipment, their uniforms, their things that they're using. So we appreciate our volunteers, our team members. They are the salts of the earth and really being willing to not only do this effort to begin with, but then pay out of their pocket to do that is a huge impact. So if we even had just a simple uniform allowance for unified gear, for pants, the helmets, the shirts, you know, a lot of times they're dealing with biohazard situations and they're currently just taking all their clothes home, washing them, and coming back the next day to continue to serve. But there's definitely some opportunities with the increase in TRT uses that we could support these teams as well. And then additional training. It's great to have all of our volunteers that are willing to go into training do so. We have 17 members that currently have some sort of certifications, but the more that we could get, the better response that we could have and the more educated we could make the public as well. So definitely additional considerations that we could, we could look at there. Go ahead to the next slide. So, and just when dealing with this, let's look at some of our current expenses. So we currently have our convention visitors bureau that takes up, you know, that 2% of marketing dollars that we give to Explore Utah Valley to market the county, to conventions, different sporting events as well, kind of do that large-scale marketing throughout the nation and really throughout the world to bring people into Utah County. We've got our convention center bond payment that we're still paying off on this building. We've got a great interest rate there. We fortunately refinanced when interest rates were very low and so that, that's a huge benefit to have that on a very, very low interest rate, but we'll continue to pay that until that's paid off. The Freedom Festival is another event that we continue to support. Lake Authority, we did a partnership on a marketing effort there. Many of you have probably seen some of those commercials and movie theaters and on Facebook, marketing Utah Lake and kind of dispelling some of the myths around the lake, letting people know that the lake has cleaned up significantly over the years and it's safe to recreate and quite enjoyable. And then a few other organizations that, that we've chosen to support through recommendations from the Tourism Tax Advisory Board, which is made up of local taxpayers into these specific taxes. So go ahead to the next slide. And just some final considerations, you know, we've determined that about 50% of the county fire calls are actually indirect response to tourism impacts on the canyons, but fire mitigation is not currently an allowable use. I think we could make a great case for that this coming legislative session to open that up as well, because that is a big, big need that we see in our county. But if voted to enact at our future meeting in a couple of weeks, as long as we enact it before July 1st, then the tax would kick in on October 1st. And then if we did anytime after that, it wouldn't be until next year that this tax would be enacted. So that's why we're having the discussion today. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to, happy to answer them.
Questions, Commissioner? Any questions, Commissioner Gardner?
I don't have any, I'm good.
I will note on all of those projects, just for the public who's not aware, those, these funds can only be used for marketing tourism. So it may seem like, oh, I'd rather spend that money elsewhere. This must be used in this format, so just to clarify.
That's correct. Okay. Thank you, appreciate that Ezra.
Yeah.
Okay. Our next item is a public hearing to discuss the proposed land swap to transfer Bridalvale Falls Parkland to the county from the federal government in exchange for Forest Service adjacent land. Ezra, do you want to tee this up?
Yep.
For Richard?
Do you want to bring up those other renderings that we've got? So as many of you may be aware, couple, let's see, this is about four years ago now, there was a lot of interest in Bridalvale Falls and what we do there. There was a proposal that was made and the commissioners at the time, we had a very long public meeting, lots of comments, lots of engagement, and basically the result of that is the Bridalvale Falls area was put into a conservation easement and made into a state monument as well. And so the county has partnered with the state to make a master plan for the area that highlights the openness, the beauty of the area, and it's, it's been a long process in the making. We've gotten thousands of comments on, on different surveys that we've done and we continue to try to educate the public about this process and about this project to make sure all these improvements actually happen now. So one of the issues that we ran into as we were moving forward with these processes is conflicts between the federal government and the local government. It was hard to get some of the approvals to go in and do the work that the people had been asking for to make this area safer. One of the huge highlights that we've noted is that right now there's conflicting pedestrian and bike traffic where pedestrians stop to enjoy the falls and there's a nice bike trail that goes right through it and people come in at high speeds and there's been some dangerous accidents that have happened in that area as a result of that. So one of the primary things that we've, we've proposed with this project is splitting that pedestrian and bike traffic so families can, can come to the falls and enjoy it and be at the base, people can take pictures while the bike traffic is directed around the pedestrians. So in these renderings that we have now, you can kind of see the difference there. So on that bottom slide, you'll see on the left, on your left, if you're looking at the photo there, there's a pedestrian way, there's some kind of staggered gates there so that people can, can walk through, but that bikes don't want to then just shoot right through. But the bikes then are moved to, on your screen, on the right side of the parking lot where they can safely travel around and continue at their speeds. And so that will greatly help the area, help keep that pedestrian bike traffic separate and make sure people can enjoy the fall safely. But as far as this public hearing on the land swap, so anytime the county proposes disposing property or transferring it out of our name to somebody else, we have to by law have this hearing to say, here's, you know, here's the land that's being exchanged or disposed of if it has a significant value. And Bridalvale Falls obviously has a significant value, so where we've made a pitch to the federal government to say, hey, if you take, you know, the area closer to the top of the falls, some of that area where you guys have Forest Service land nearby, and we can take all the base of the falls, that'll make things a lot more consistent, a lot easier to manage where we're already at the base of the falls, maintaining the trails, maintaining this area, and then the Forest Service is already kind of at the top of the falls with just the trees and, and all those kind of, you know, natural amenities there. It makes it a lot easier to manage going forward and so we don't run into the same conflicts that we have.
Can we see that map?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Let's see, do you guys have? I'll make sure we get the map pulled up here shortly, but ultimately we've got the base of the falls and then the top of the falls where, where that land will be, will be swapped. I'll see if I can get this pulled up here. But why don't we, if, if, if there's no other questions or comments there, we can open up the public hearing. Just a reminder that this all is in the conservation easements. We have the base of the falls, the top of the falls. We established that conservation easement after we had all those public comments. So none of this will mean anything can change about, you know, adding things to the top of the falls that are unsightly. This is all keeping the area open within the scope of the conservation easement and we're so happy to do that and happy that conservation easement was put in place so we can continue to keep this area open and accessible to the public.
And I'd also like to clarify on this. I've had a few people ask, we're not buying it from them, it's a land swap. So this is not going to take taxpayer dollars locally. We're not paying the federal government for this land. We're swapping land that we own and land that they own so that we can have contiguous. The Utah County already maintains this area. This is not an additional project. This is just allowing us to complete the work that we've already funded.
Thank you. That entertain a motion to go into public hearing?
It's all moved.
Second?
Hey, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, we're now in public hearing. We'd ask you to keep your comments to two minutes and if there's anyone that would like to address the commission? Mark?
Mark Allen, Protect and Reserve American Fork Canyon. Feels like a family reunion, the haves and the wannabes. You guys ought to show a little more love.
Ouch.
No, I'm just teasing. It's been a long time since I've been down here. I helped initiate the preservation of Bridalvale Falls. Question for staff, if I may, is the conservation easement still not held by open trust lands?
It is.
Okay. Clarification, the top of the area that proposed for the swap is that Forest Service is going to go into the ownership of the county?
We'll pull up that map and show you that after.
My concern is that there was a point of termination for a tram that Peter Karp tore up the special use permit from the Forest Service. We are adamantly opposed, and the whole community was, of a gondola ever being put back up there and the base station was left active so that there could be something done. I'm also concerned about the interaction between potentially Provo City and UDOT. And I don't know, that upper parking lot at one point in time looked like it was going to be a termination point for a gondola back when the prior commissioners were trying to do some shenanigans. The other thing is keep it fee-free. I like the renderings, but I just think it's in the wrong canyon. I think those renderings ought to be more applied to Upper Vivian Park and Nunn's. And we saw what happened up Tibble Fork when we did improvements. We bastardized the area. So I would love to have whoever designs this before dirt's turned. Look at Muir Woods, what they've done in California. It's a walk-in experience, a thousand feet walk-in rather than easy access by cars. I think that'll just create problems that are unintended. But thank you for what you're trying to do. I did file a grammar request for some of this information and I didn't receive some of this stuff that I'm seeing now, so whoever's in charge of grammar needs to be retrained.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
All moved.
Second?
Hey, we have a motion in a second to go out of public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we're now out of public hearing. Okay, so do we have the map that we can throw up to address? Richard, do you want to help us maybe, or Ezra, with the different hatch marks where we can see the colors?
Not sure. The, the area in the, the lower left-hand corner with the green around it, that is the area that is the Bridalvale Falls property that the county owns. The area with kind of the, I'll say the light blue, that's some of the area there and up canyon more specifically, above the Bridalvale Falls area right in through there, up towards Upper Falls Park is the area that we're, we're asking for the Forest Service to deed to the county. Off to the, more to the right, upper corner there, up near Vivian Park, there are some areas up on the, the, up on the mountain that would be some of the areas that we'd be looking to trade to the Forest Service that are up on the mountainside rather than down in the park area. Doesn't affect Vivian Park, Vivian Park proper, just the mountainsides around it, so.
And maybe address for me the concern of any talks of a gondola?
There, there will be no gondola, period. The commission made that decision several years ago as it went into the, the conservation easement that was taken off the table. There was a, a, an old, I'll say master plan for lack of a better word, of the area that included some of those amenities. That has been rescinded. We asked for that to be taken away and the, the concept plan that is kind of what you're seeing here with the, the renderings is what's the currently adopted plan that the commission has adopted and funded. Has no, no plans for the, the gondola at all, both the, the upper tram station where the old restaurant was, that was completely removed about eight years ago. The, the lower tram shack that was there by the river was taken out by the avalanche and damage that was also removed seven or eight years ago. Both of those facilities are completely gone with no intention of those coming back, so.
So the area that's not been removed, the base of the gondola, is that because of cost?
It is gone.
It is all gone?
It is gone.
Okay, so.
There is nothing of the gondola up there.
There's nothing up there, okay, very good. And my, my last question for you would be, I think, I can think of two examples of where we have partnered with the Forest Service, the 085 Road in American Fork, and then two years ago during the floods up Payson Canyon. Maybe walk us through why we did Payson Canyon after the flood washed out the road.
Yeah, so, so Payson Canyon, Nebel Loop Road, this would have been in the spring of 2023. The, there was an area there where we had a couple of culverts that failed and took out a section, a couple of sections of road, the Forest Service because of, you know, some of the, the red tape they get to deal with on the federal level, was saying it would probably take a couple of years to get that done. The county stepped up and said, hey, we'll, we'll go in and get the road open. We were able to go in in a couple of weeks timeframe and get it opened back up. Been, had a good working relationship with Forest Service there. They're working on trying to get us some funding for what we fronted on that, getting it back to us. We'll, we'll see if that ever comes about, but they're trying. With, with this project up here, we initially met with some pretty strong resistance from, from their folks. They have, they have since softened that quite a bit. They are working with us on a permit for some of the amenities, but we would still like to do the, the land exchange so that once we get these amenities done, they're all on, on county-owned and controlled land.
Any questions for Richard, Ezra?
No questions, I have a comment.
Okay.
Thank you, Richard, for all your work. Like you said, there's too much red tape at the federal level. This is simply bringing the land back to us. These decisions should be made in this room, not in Washington DC, and this is just a no-brainer to me. Let's, let's have stewardship of our public lands right here at the county level. There will be no commercialization here, there will be no fees, there will be no major changes. We can better maintain, we can better care for this area here in Utah County. Thank you to Congressman Kennedy who's assisted us on this from the beginning. I think someone told Richard once, it will take an act of Congress to get us these things done, and so we said, okay, we'll take the challenge. So Congressman Kennedy, very helpful. Provameric Fusi has been supportive. Governor Cox has been supportive, so lots of thanks to go around.
Commissioner Gardner, any questions?
Yeah, I think when, yeah, and I think the, the original controversy around Bridalvale predated any of the three of us. And I came in kind of right towards the end of that. predated any of the three of us. And I came in kind of right towards the end of that. I was not here during, during that controversy, but right afterwards, we were asked to vote in support of making Bridalvale a state monument. And I, my vote was only contingent upon us having the ability to maintain it as a county, so that it stayed free and accessible to our citizens. That was very important to me, that it stay open, that it stay accessible, and that all people, regardless of their ability to pay, have the ability to enjoy that. This just continues with that. You know, we are committed to, to keeping that to be a jewel of our county, and, and this just furthers that effort.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate your input and time on that. Maybe one last question, timeframe. Like, this still has an opportunity to... I was going to say be delayed by the federal government, but it's probably...
It seems like that construction will start next season on those. We'll do, okay, we will get some done this year. So we'll start construction this year, and...
And that's prior to the swap?
That's correct.
No, he said we'll be working on areas that we already hold.
Okay, gotcha. Nothing...
So, so not on the area that would be in question for the land swap, on the area that county already owns, we will be doing some work this year.
Gotcha. Okay. So as far as timeframe, we still don't know from Congress's side of things.
Yeah, they, they did email today and said that they have everything they need to, to keep things going forward, and they're, we're interested to hear how this went, but...
Okay.
Yeah, they're moving forward in their process, too.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. That helps me.
Call him Mark wasn't too mad today.
Okay, very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Build the consent items, consent agenda of the 18 consent items. Is there any that you two would like to hold for discussion?
I, I don't necessarily need to hold it, but I wanted to make a comment on number 13, and I don't know, Commissioner Beltran, if you wanted to. Should we hold that and comment on it, or just make a quick comment?
We can hold it, sure.
Yeah, hold 13. Okay.
I will comment just on seven and eight, especially we have all the sheriff's head haunches in here. I appreciate our partnership with Vineyard Eagle Mountain. I know they do. And I also appreciate Vineyard and Eagle Mountain investing in their, in their police program. They continue to add officers, and, and the partnership is going well.
Excellent. Okay. Moving into the regular agenda, we have six items there. Is there anything that anyone would like to hold for discussion?
We need to continue item two. It's not ready.
Okay.
And then item five as well.
Continue, not ready?
Yeah, it should be ready by two weeks from now, so we can just continue it for two weeks.
Both items, two weeks is okay?
Yeah.
Oh.
Oh, all right.
Those are different.
Richard just, Richard just had a hard time.
It was elections, one, Richard.
Okay. Continuing item two and five for two weeks. Anything else? Okay, we will strike all four closed-session items.
Okay, for the consent agenda, we will hold number 13. On the regular agenda, we will continue number two to June 25th commission meeting, and we will also continue regular item number five to the June 25th meeting. As far as closed meetings, we will strike six, seven, eight, and nine. Excuse me, let me back up. We will strike seven, eight, nine, and 10.
Very good. Thank you, Jalen. Okay, item 13 of the consent.
Commissioner Beltran, do you want to lead out on that, since you're the one who put it on the agenda?
Sure.
Maybe give a little overview?
Yeah, so, you know, next year's the 250th year of the country, and so the state legislature has allocated some funds and some programming to honor that, honor that milestone for the country. And we are just enrolling in the program. They're trying to get all 29 counties and have events throughout the year. And so we are, are doing our part to participate in that. We have the Freedom Festival, of course, so we like to honor the country every single year. And so we will make a play on that and those festivities. We will look into adding additional things. The purpose is just to, you know, have community and, and get our people together and appreciate the country. So Commissioner Gardner and I were on a call with the program director, and we needed to create a committee and approve this resolution to opt in, and so that's where we're at in the process.
Yeah, and I want to reiterate that. We are very fortunate that we have a lot of great resources that already take place in our county, and because we are so proud of our country here in the county, we already have a lot of those festivals. So many cities and counties are creating celebrations for this event, but as Commissioner Beltran stated, we have the Freedom Festival that already does that really well for us. And they don't just do one thing. You know, they have the Flag Day, they've got the devotionals, as well as the entire week of, of events. On top of that, there's going to be a series of lectures from the Center for Constitutional Studies at UVU that also happens to be in our county, so those events are already happening. A lot of those are happening. I had the idea, maybe we can look at putting our county fair theme next year to be America's 250 for our county fair. But we'll be partnering with a lot of those organizations, like the Freedom Festival, the Constitutional Studies at UVU, and several other organizations, and ensuring that we can support them in any way that we can as we celebrate that monumental occasion for the country.
Perfect. I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 13.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Thank you. Now is the time that if anyone would like to address the commission, we're open for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to come up and address the commissioners? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, everyone.